That would be my input. And I would, I would much prefer not to get into a long drawn out thing because that will add to this meeting and Anthony said he's got to be out by eight. So I'm sure others have questions. That's all I have.
Good comment. Yes. Yeah. And Commissioner Terrell.
Yeah, I very much sincerely apologize for missing the last planning one. It's the only one I missed. And I had some comments to make about the open space and also tree preservation. And would I like, should I just submit those in writing and then that can be just taken care of that way?
Yeah. And so that will be the development code. I just want to make sure that we're dividing up these. So there might be some general open space policies and maybe some policies on, on tree preservation that are supportive of text amendments to the development code. But for March 11th, it'll be just the comprehensive plan, the focus.
Yeah. Okay. Should I still submit those comments about the code update?
Yeah, I think it's been better to be there with the council.
Yeah, I just biffed it. It was the only one I've missed the whole time. And I was there for the other tree discussion, but this one I missed it. Sorry.
And there will be, I guess I'm sort of taking, March was a March 5th city council meeting. Just one more kind of work set, but it's sort of a wrap up of just the things that, what was identified at the last meeting there? I think it was just like last week or so. That some, that people want a little bit more explanation on, but we have a hearings ready document very shortly here. So yeah, we're just trying to fine tune as much as we can for the development code. The development code hearing will be on April 8th. That's the, April 8th is the planning commission public hearing for the development code. So yeah, that's right on the heels of the comprehensive plan hearing.
Okay. And so should I just submit those comments CCU, send them to Shannon, to Amy, who should I send them to? Or should I do three J?
Amy, I think go through the city is better.
Send them to you and you'll distribute them to whoever needs. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And I don't, I, like I said, I don't have a lot, but I, I was listening to it. And I think I was sort of mentioned in passing as being missing and I feel like I should add what the very brief comment I would have made. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Suzy. And also sort of we've got the trickle down effect by Suzy's continued attendance to that. So I just appreciate your attendance and all those meetings. And yeah, if we could get those documents ahead of time, that would help us to be thoughtful participants. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Yeah. Is anything else? Happy to convey that, but I will, we'll get the documents out as soon as possible.
Nope.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. I just sent an email to Amy, letting them know that, letting her know that April 8th, sadly, I will be out of the state and not available that day. So that's going to be a fun one, Suzy. You get to be the chair that day. Apologies in advance.
Okay, well, I'll pay attention to what you do every, every time we meet before then, and maybe I'll, maybe I'll be able to handle it. We'll see.
I'll send you a picture of myself that you can kind of staple your. Then you can, you can just have everybody coming at me anyways. Excellent. Do we have any public citizen comments before we get into our training? This is for items that are not on the agenda. I see two individuals that are not commissioners and I wanted to invite them for, or do we?
Just a heads up, Chris Brubaker is another trainer with the Ethics Commission.
Okay, seeing, hearing none and seeing none, we'll proceed with our ethics training. Item four being on our agenda, Mr. Sparza, the floor is yours, Mr. White. Have a good evening, sir.
All right. Well, now my Brady Bunch screen has now altered. We've lost that one. That one person had, had an even thing there, but that's all right. So I'm going to share my screen because I'm giving a presentation here. So I need to show you all some stuff. So it's, let me get situated here for a sec. Let's see. All right. All right. Right. How's that look on your end? Does that look all right?
Looks good.
I see a thumbs up. Awesome. So just heads up, Chris Brubaker is also with the Ethics Commission. He's, he's kind of one of the newer folks. So he's sitting in, he's going to answer what questions he has in the chat. If he gets stuck, he'll probably, you know, throw it back at me. But here's the deal, we're going to cover a lot of stuff as, as as much as I'd love ethics to be really simple, it's not, it's very complex. But my job here today is to kind of make this a little bit easier to take, to take in. So forgive me if I get, if I, if I get repetitive on some things. It's just my attempt of trying to, to kind of hammer the basics into your head. You probably see on the screen, my name's Charlie. If you have a question, there's a few of us here, so I don't mind you unmuting and ask me, asking me. But if you can hang on at, at all towards the very end, because I'm probably, as I move through here, I'm probably going to be answering your questions. As I, as I, as I chop through this thing and just heads up, we're going to be building. So you're going to hear me say that quite a bit. So that being said, let's go ahead and dive into this thing. I'm going to take y'all's pictures out of here. Let me just make it a little smaller. So I can see the thumbs up and stuff on my end. And because I'll probably be asking you things if this is okay or that, okay. So let's go ahead and jump into this. So the first thing is, is the other commission, the Legislative Assembly of Oregon has determined that our role as a public official is one of a public trust. So one way to safeguard that public trust is by following the statutes in O R S 244. You're going to hear me say O R S 244 a lot. Now, don't worry, you don't need to memorize that number. Okay. It's just, that's where we do all of our, our world and the ethics part of the commission is all in O R S 244. And that being said, let me say that it's our responsibility as public officials to follow those statutes. It's not our public body's responsibility. It's us as individuals to make sure we follow them. So and the things we're going to talk about is, is pretty simple to overview. So we're going to talk about using your position for financial gain, what gifts are appropriate to accept. And also we're going to define what a conflict of interest is, then how to handle that. So how do we handle a conflict of interest? So again, for us tonight is just going to be a review of the statutes. We're not going to get into all the legal speak. So again, my job is to make sure that I deliver this in a way that, that's easier for people to understand. So that being said, if you do need to go to the statutes, go to the statutes. This is not legal advice. I'm not a lawyer. So the statutes are there if you need to go in deeper. Now here's, here's the catch. And this is something that we've been pressing really hard in the past year. Is that I want y'all to see the Ethics Commission as a resource. So reach out to us, shoot us a message, give us a phone call, ask us questions. We are a resource. We're here for you folks. Okay. So let's just say, for example, you're in a situation and you don't want to go to the statutes or you go to statutes and you're like, I'm lost in this legal speak world. Send me over to Charlie. Then of course, of course you call us, shoot us an email. We will help you with that. That's part of what we do is, is making sure you folks stay within the statutes and not find yourself in any, any trouble. So I know I'm, I kind of look at like, we're on the front end, the training side, we're on the front end, we're on the proactive side. So that being said, a little bit about the Ethics Commission, and we were created in 1974. And again, this was to establish transparency in the Oregon government. There are nine citizen commissioners. They're the ones that kind of approve what we do when moving forward with investigations and things of that nature. Now there's 15 staff members. And our jurisdiction is over three areas. So I've got a funny one here to tell you all here in a minute. But the big one we're going to talk about today is O R S 244. Again, don't have to memorize that. We also have legislation over lobby law regulations. It's basically just lobbyists have to register in Oregon and they have to file expenditure reports. Another one's going to be, the big one is public meanings law. This public meetings law is going to be required training for public officials. It's going to be coming from us. Here's the big, the big reveal. It will not be ready until May or June at this point. The reason being is that with the Attorney General's Office, they have to approve our training because this has been handed over to us. And they want to make sure that we're delivering the proper material in the proper way. And so they're determining what that information is. So that's where we're at right now. So it's not like we're kind of trying to figure out what we, we, we just open up the book and go, okay, we'll start with this one and just keep on going. But they're kind of like, no, we want, we want something more specific. So that's coming up. The reason that my joke here was that this is our area of jurisdiction. We get a lot of phone calls of people saying, well, you know, hey, they changed out the toilet paper in our bathroom. That's an ethics violation. I know it is. They went from good stuff to bad stuff. Do something about it. Well, it's not our jurisdiction. We get those, those types of calls a lot. So there's my little joke on, on our jurisdiction. So today the big ones are going to hit is going to be use of office, and it's not going to be in this order, by the way, use of office, private employment, conflicts of interest, nepotism and gifts. So we're going to do a deep dive in all these. But you heard me say we're going to build, right? So we got to start off with some definitions. So the first definition you're going to run to is a public official. And so the way a public official is defined in O R S is that you, if you serve the state, a city, a county, or special district, or any other public body, you are a public official. And this is whether you're compensated or not. Okay. So when I get compensated or not, you folks probably are not compensated for being commissioners. So yeah, there you go. So guess what? You know, the answer to this already, right? You're sitting in this training, you are a public official. So my first thought, whenever I think of non compensated public officials, I always think of for some reason volunteer firefighter. That's where my first, my brain goes first. All right. So that's public official. That's the easy one. Now we're going to do something that gets a little, we're going to change things up a little bit. So relatives, we all know who our relatives are in the real world. Okay. That, that's an easy one. But in the statutes, they define it a little bit tighter. So in the statutes, it says it's your spouse, it's your children, your stepchildren, it's your daughter in laws, your sons in laws, it's your parents, your stepparents, it's your siblings and step siblings, and it's your spouse's family. So you notice some people are missing from this list. Grandma and grandpa are missing. Your aunts and uncles are missing and your cousins are missing. Okay. That's just a few off the top. But by the statutes, when they talk about relatives, this is it. There's three more though, we need to add to this. So the first one is going to be a relative is anyone that you have a financial support obligation to. All right. The next one is going to be anyone that is benefiting from your employment. So maybe they're on your healthcare. Okay. That's also a relative. And also a relative is anyone that you may be benefiting from their employment. Okay. So you may be on someone else's healthcare. That's also a relative by the statutes. All right. So we got that out of the way. Everybody with me so far? All right. Awesome. Thank you, Suzy. All right. So next one's going to be household members. And so this is where things get a little, a little more complicated. Again, my job is to make this simple, right? So household member is anyone who's living in your home. Okay. So this is a roommate. This could be a significant other, could be a best friend. And then of course it could be, you know, your cousin and aunt or an uncle or your grandparents. Okay. It's basically anyone living in your home. All right. So we got those out of the way. Now we're going to keep going. We're building. So a business, everyone knows what a business is, but we have to define it. And in O R S, it defines a business as any legal entity that's operated for economic gain. Okay. So that's simple. That's a, that's a self-employed individual. That's a sole proprietorship. It's a partnership. It's a corporation. It's a firm, a franchise and association. That's a business. All right. Next one is going to be an associated business. So this is where things get, this is where things are getting a little complicated. So the first one is going to be a private business. So a private business is one that, we're going back to the definitions. You, your relative, or a member of your household is a director and officer, owner, employee, or agent of this private business. Okay. This is a business that you're associated with. Or they own stock equity interest, stock options, or debt instruments of a thousand dollars or more. Okay. So this is, this is how this looks. Okay. So let's just say, for example, my daughter works as, at a cashier at a local hardware store. And we'll just say Smith and Smith Hardware. I use this example on every training. So if you've heard it, just bear with me. So my daughter is cashier at Smith and Smith Hardware. I am associated with that business because my daughter is an employee of that private business. Okay? So that's how this works. Okay. So you may take a moment and take inventory of who your relatives are, who your household members are, and find out where they work. And guess what? If they fit in this, in this category up top, then that is a business which you are associated with. Okay? All right. Let's take it one step further. All right. A publicly held corporation. So that's, that's a fancy way of saying this, this is a business traded on the stock market. Okay? So in order for you to be associated with a publicly held corporation, you, your relative, or a member of your household will have to be an officer or director of that corporation. Or own stock equity interest, stock options, or debt instruments of a hundred thousand dollars or more. Okay? So let's take that example I gave you earlier. My daughter's working at Smith and Smith Hardware. It's a locally owned, private, privately owned business. And she gets a job at Home Depot as a cashier. Well, guess what? Home Depot is not a business I'm associated with because she would have to be an officer or director of that business for me to be associated with it. Okay? So if she got promoted, just say, for example, yeah, they, her cashier skills were great and they decided to bump her up to officer or director. Then yes, I would be associated with Home Depot. That would be a business I'm associated with. Okay. Of course, also the stock options, equity interest, debt instruments of a hundred thousand dollars or more. Okay? So we got business, business we're associated with. Now let's talk about what is not a business. It's pretty simple, but again, we have to define it. So public bodies are not businesses. So your state agency, your city, your county, your special district, your school district, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, we are not businesses. Okay. We are public bodies. The other one, and this is where we get tricky, is a nonprofit 501(c) where you, your relative, or a member of your household is in an unpaid capacity. Okay. So that would be something like, let's just say, for example, let's bring my daughter in. This is, this is run her through this. Okay. Let's say, for example, she serves on the board of the YMCA. And which we all know YMCA is a nonprofit, right? She's on the board of a YMCA and she's in an unpaid capacity. It's still not a business I'm associated with. Okay? Let's just say, for example, she's a, a member of the YMCA, pays, pays a membership fee, is a member of the YMCA. Still not a business which I'm associated with because she's not getting compensated. All right. But let's say, for example, along with being a board member in the summer, she, she's paid to be a lifeguard. Okay? Well, guess what? At that point, it is a business which I'm associated with because she is at that point collecting an hourly wage. Okay. In that scenario. Okay. Everybody with me so far? All right, cool. Suzy's speaking for all y'all. She's doing great, by the way. So it's, I hope I'm, if I lose Suzy, we're all lost. Okay. All right. So I'm going to throw a question out at you. Give me a thumbs up, thumbs down. Suzy, you're, you're calling the shots here. So your cousin is included in the law's definition of a relative. True or false? Yeah, you got it. That's pretty easy. I'm throwing softballs at here. This is also telling me my training's working. So awesome. Let's throw another one at you. City council member is a public official. True or false? Awesome. All right. I think we have a curve ball in here. Oh yeah, here it is. We're going to make you think for a minute. The nonprofit you volunteer at, serving lunch once a month, is a business which you are associated with. True or false? I'm getting, I'm getting the head shake from Annette in the no fashion.
But you're not getting paid for it.
Yeah. So the catch here is you volunteer.
Yeah. And the business isn't a publicly owned business.
Correct.
So we're good.
So true or false?
So no, you're not. It's okay.
Yeah, perfect. Awesome. Okay. All right. That was the easy part. Let's get into the tough stuff. All right, conflict of interest. So we all know what a, we've heard those words. We were, you know, I know you folks are probably very familiar with what a conflict of interest is. But the training here is designed to kind of break this down on the simplest terms. So we're going to figure out what a conflict of interest is, and I'm going to walk you through the steps of how to handle a conflict of interest. All right. So a conflict of interest is basically broken down in two categories. Potential or actual. Okay. And so the way this kind of works, the, the, the simple definition of, of a, of a conflict of interest is when you as a public official take some sort of action, okay, either a vote, a recommendation or approval. And that vote, recommendation of, or, or approval has a financial impact on specific people. And that would be you, your relatives, or a business that you or your relatives are associated with. Okay. So that, that's, that's about as simple as it gets. And you're going to hear me say this over and over again. So we, we, we get in our head. So first one is, it's broken down into parts, actual potential. So the actual one is when we talk about you as a public official, taking some sort of action, again, that decision, recommendation or approval, with that, with that action, with certainty would have a financial impact on you, your relatives, or a business that you or your relatives are associated with. Okay? So what does that mean? How, how does this unfold? Okay. So let me, let me give you kind of a basic example. Let's just say you're in charge determining who's going to do all the catering for all the city events for the next year. Okay? And your father owns a catering business. Okay? Your father submits a bid for that particular job, for that, that role of being the caterer for all the city's events for the next year. Okay? So at this point, you would have an actual conflict of interest because you are on the board that's deciding whether or not who's going to get this, this contract. And your father, who is your relative, who owns a catering business, which is a business you are associated with, has submitted a bid. Okay? And you know that either approving or denying this bid is going to have a, with certainty, a financial effect on your father's catering business. Okay? So the idea here is that the decision you make is with certainty going to have an effect on the business that your, your father's catering business. So that's an actual conflict of interest. Okay? So the next one is going to be potential. So potential, it gets a little bit more muddy in this, in this section. So with a potential conflict of interest, it's still that scenario where you, the public official, are taking some sort of action, making a decision, a recommendation or approval. But this time, it's unclear if, and let's go back to that example, your father owning a catering business, right? So at this point, you're just thinking of, of bringing on or thinking of contracting out a catering business. You haven't really discussed it in depth, but you're thinking about it. And also your father, who owns that catering business, may or may not put in a bid at this point. He doesn't even know about it. And maybe you've said it in passing, but he said, you know what? I'm pretty good. I think we're good for the year. I may or may not. Depends on how things work. So at this point, it's a, since it's just a possible financial effect, it's uncertain. At that point, it's potential. Okay. So with potential, it's always unclear. It's not, you can't see the financial gain or the, the, the financial detriment or the financial effect. It's, it's just not clear. So that's where potential comes into play. Everybody with me so far? All right. Okay. All right. So let me throw a scenario at you. All right. So you're reviewing and approving grant applications. Government agencies, colleges, universities, public schools, public school districts and nonprofits are all eligible to apply. The nonprofit your spouse works at has applied for the grant. What, I'll ask you first, do you have a conflict of interest? Yes or no? Yes. Okay. Is it actual or potential?
Actual.
All right. So yes, this is an actual conflict of interest. All right. Good, good call. Because the catch here is, if you look at the, at the final answer here, nonprofit, right? But your spouse works there. So they get, they get a salary. So there, that financial impact is for certain. Okay? Easy one. All right. Let's, let's change it up just a little bit. All right. Your spouse serves on, on the board of a nonprofit 501(c) corporation that has applied for the grant. Do you still have a conflict of interest?
Potential.
You got it. Yep. It's potential, but actually you can, you could go as far as saying no, because your spouse serves on the board, there's actually no financial impact there at all. So all right, let's go one step further. What if your spouse works for a school district that has applied for a grant?
Yes, conflict of interest.
Okay. So let's think about that for a sec. So remember, a conflict of interest, again, my, just bear with me as I repeat, because you're making a decision that's going to have a, would have some type of financial effect on certain people. Okay. In this case, the school district is not a business. Okay. So it bounces back to public body. So you don't have a conflict of interest in this scenario because you're making a decision for a public body. Okay? The decision is always going to be based upon the you, your relative or business you're associated with. So the idea here is that you're making decisions based on the school district. Ideally, you're supposed to be making decisions on the school district. So this would not come into play as a conflict of interest. Everybody with me so far?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the school district's applying for a grant. So there's money involved.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not clear on why that's not a conflict of interest.
Okay. So just on the, on the simplest terms, the school district is not a business which you're associated with. It's a school district. It's a public body. That's this, that's the simple as I can put it.
Okay. But the spouse works there.
Yes.
But you're in a public body, he's in a public, or the spouse, the person is in a public body. And because they're both public bodies.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. That, that's the one that everybody gets stuck on because they're just like, well, you know, it's, there's still a financial gain there. Yes, for the school district, it's not a business. So the idea here is, look, if we, if we break it down even simpler, the idea here is you're not making decisions that's going to be a financial gain for you personally, or your relatives personally, or their business. The idea here is that it's the, it's the school district.
Yeah. It isn't going to align anybody's individual, personal pockets.
There you go. I wasn't going to say that, but I, that's, I, I was trying to lean on that pretty hard, but you got it. So remember, a conflict of interest is always going to be you as a public official making some type of decision that's going to have some type of financial impact on specific people. Okay? So conflicts of interest exist. Okay. It's, that's, that's, that's a thing. It happens. It's, it's, it's not something that's like, I have a conflict of interest, I can't do this. It, it happens. So there's steps you need to take. So what if you are now with a conflict of interest? So if you're a board member, a commissioner or elected official, if it's a potential conflict of interest, then you need to make that public announcement that you have a potential conflict of interest. Okay. And you need to do this on each occasion before acting. Okay. So let's go back to the, you know, the father and the catering business. Okay. So yeah, you, you're in a, in a meeting and you're discussing the option for hiring a catering business for the year. But you haven't really made any decisions yet. That's the moment where you would step up and say, my father owns a catering business, I have a potential conflict of interest, each time this is brought up. All right. Conflict gets a little more specific. I mean, sorry, actual conflict is where it gets a little bit more specific. So at this point, again, you must make that public, public announcement on each occasion. And at this point, and we're talking now that you are actively looking for a catering business and your father has actually, who the catering business actually put in a bid. And at this point, you, there's no participating, discussion, debate or voting. Okay. So you have to step back. All right. So there is a catch to this though. So the idea here is that if a public official's vote is necessary to meet quorum, then at that point, you still make that public announcement. But also you may not discuss or be part of the debate. Okay. So you make that announcement, yeah, my father owns a catering business. I can't be part of this discussion. Uh, I can't be part of this discussion. And of course, at that point, you may vote. Okay, the idea behind this provision is that Oregon government keeps moving forward. Okay? So we don't get stuck behind, uh, not being able to make quorum, not be able to move forward. This is, is in here to provide that for you. All right. Okay, so conflicts of interest, that was the hard one. Any questions for me on conflicts of interest? What's up?
Um, so you know, I, I think in the past ethics chains that I've had, it's, it's really, it's as you said, that, that, that the, the business of whatever the entity is, has to move forward. But as long as you're transparent and you announce every time and you refrain from any participation, then ethically you're covered.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's exactly it. You know, it's, the idea here is that, I mean, when you, when you start kind of, again, on simplest terms, you know, you don't want to be on the board and, and have your, you know, your father's catering business doing all the catering, your brother's construction business doing all the construction, your, your son's landscaping business doing all the landscaping. I mean, that's, that's kind of what's going on here, so.
Are you jumping ahead to nepotism? Oh my gosh.
A little bit. Here, here's the thing. Um, we, I, I tried to put this in all the, in all the, in all the trainings, but they all overlap just a little bit. I mean, they all overlap, so. Um, so conflicts of interest, that's easy. Let's go into use of office. So use of office is basically you are prohibited from using your official position or your, uh, official, uh, use of office, uh, for financial gain. Or, uh, you also may not attempt to use your official position for financial gain, or avoidance of financial detriment. Okay, so this one expands a little bit further. This one says, this, this applies to not only yourself, your relative, or a business that you're, uh, that you or your relative, uh, are associated with, but this goes further into household member. Okay, so. Um, and this could look like a lot of different things. Okay, so this could look like um, using an agency vehicle to run your personal errands on the clock. Okay, it could be uh, using the copying machine, it could be, uh, parking your RV on county property. Um, just because no one has told you you couldn't, uh, uh, the idea here is that, you know, you parking your RV on county property, it may be in a back lot somewhere, but you're avoiding those storage fees that you would have to pay somewhere else. Okay? Uh, also, uh, you can't create an opportunity for yourself as well in your role as a public official. So prohibiting use of office, again, looks like a lot of different things. But what you always want to ask yourself is, do I only, do I have this opportunity only because of my role as a public official? And if the answer is yes, then it's probably prohibited. Okay, so, um, I mean, we have tons of examples like these. Go ahead.
Um, I was going to say, reflecting back on that too, uh, one of the other sort of decision points was would an average person in, in the public sector have the same opportunity? In other words, could they park their IV in the public works lot? You know, if the answer is no, then that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, it always goes back to, do I myself only have this opportunity because of the position I hold? And like I said, it could be, I mean, these are things that, that come to us quite a bit. I mean, things like, uh, we've had, uh, complaints where, uh, people were taking home, uh, pressure washers from, from different public bodies, uh, you know, maintenance facilities and pressure washing their home, their driveways and doing their neighbors, and then taking it back to work on, on Monday morning, uh, leaf blowers. Um, people taking home agency vehicles, uh, I mean, there is a catch, and we're going to talk about these in the next couple of slides, but just kind of always remember, this opportunity is only available to you because of the position you hold, and it's probably not allowed. And so, um, this is one where, uh, a, a classic example of, of reaching out to us if you have a, like, question or concern, uh, about something that you, you may be doing that you, that, that you may not think is allowed. Okay, so we'll get into the exceptions here, because this is kind of what we're alluding to. So first one is going to be your official compensation package. So your official compensation package, I know everyone kind of thinks of, okay, well, it's your salary, it's your healthcare, it's your 401k, all right? But this could go further. So depending on your public body, they may actually have more for you. And it may be something like, to the effect of, well, if you work for the city, you get to park for free on city, on, on the city lot. Okay? Everyone else has to pay, but because you're a city, a, a public official, city employee, then you are allowed to park in that lot for free. And that, that may be part of your compensation. Okay? So another one's going to be honorarium. Honorarium is something that, um, you may have been given in return for like giving a speech or a presentation. This is something that, there was no price set in the beginning. You, you gave a speech, a presentation. You, you, you showed up and spoke to a group of people, and afterwards, they, uh, they wanted to give you a certificate or a plaque, or they wanted to give you a gift card. That's allowed, just make sure that, um, you're aware that there is a fifty dollar limit on that. And then reimbursements. Again, this goes back to, uh, if your public body allows reimbursements for certain things. So this may be, uh, for example, uh, um, if you had to pay upfront to go to a conference, uh, and the public body has agreed to reimburse you for those registration fees. Or, uh, in my case, I travel sometimes, uh, I'm allowed to see reimbursement for my meals. So, uh, just make sure that, uh, the reimbursements is something that your public body has agreed to. And when I say agreed to, it's in writing. So this is always going to be in writing. All right, go a bit further. Unsolicited, unsolicited professional achievement award, this is going to be something like uh, winning the teacher of the year award, or maybe you won the Nobel Prize. Okay, these are allowed. Okay? Don't confuse them with appreciation awards. This is one acknowledging your role as a profession. And then legal expense trust fund contributions. So this is something that's set up through us. Basically what it is, it's a trust fund to help pay for, uh, any legal fees that a public official may incur in their role as a public official. Um, heads up, there's, I believe there's one account with us and it's not even active. So that tells you how popular this item is. Uh, from what I've been told, it's, it's very complicated, it's not easy and it's set up through us. So I was told, if anyone has, uh, questions or concerns about this, reach out to us, uh, and we can walk you through that. All right, so let me throw a scenario at you, just tell me the number. I'll, I'll read them out and just yell the number out at me. Uh, using your, which is, which one is the violation? So using your agency's open wifi network on a personal device during breaks. Number two, picking up your spouse from the airport in agency vehicle. Uh, number three, taking home surplus computer equipment that was going to be thrown out anyway. Or number four, accepting a gift card for being a speaker at an event. So what do you think? I see two, two, yeah, two is easy and I see a three. Okay, all right, so let me run through them real quick. So, yeah, the first one, that's, that's a no brainer, right? You're using your agency's open wifi, so anyone can get on it on your personal device, on your break, no violation there. Number two, obvious, you're using the agency vehicle, uh, to pick up your spouse from the airport. Agency gas, if you're doing on the clock, it's agency time, that's, that's all a no-no. So number three, taking home surplus computer equipment that was going to be thrown out anyway, this goes back to is this opportunity to take this computer, uh, computer equipment home only available to me because of my role as a public official? So this is totally that scenario. So the idea here is when it comes to, uh, in this scenario, you would either need, depending on your public body's policy or procedure, it would either need to be turned into surplus, and at that point, you could go to the surplus and, and buy it there, or uh, set it out in the lobby, if you have a lobby, and put a s- free sign on it, uh, maybe post it on your website. Uh, but the idea here is that as long as the public has an opportunity to purchase this equipment, um, then it would not be a violation. But in this case, it would be. So you, y'all did good on that one. Number four, we already know that one, twenty-five dollar gift card for a speaker at an event, that would fall under honorarium. All right, so remember, prohibited gain is always going to be, uh, not just that financial benefit, but also avoid an expense. So, and this is even if it does not result in any cost to the public body. All right, so this is, this is level one. So I'll throw a question out at you. And tell me what you think. All right, your public body has an account that gets a fifty percent discount at local hardware store. While doing your personal shopping, you ask for the public body's discount. Have you violated ethics law? I'm seeing the nods. Yeah, absolutely. Okay? Yeah, because that opportunity to get that fifty percent discount is only there because your public body has a discount there. Yeah, you can't do it. Uh, one, one thing that's come up in the past was, well, what if I use my own credit card and I don't use the discount, but I get the points? Okay, so if you're purchasing things for your public body, and your public body is reimbursing you, and you're keeping those points, and yeah, that would be, that would be a violation. All right, any questions for me so far? How's the pace? Am I moving too fast? Okay, thumbs up, awesome. All right, so again, you heard me say these things overlap. Now we get into private employment. So you heard me say already that, uh, a lot of public officials like yourselves are, are not, uh, are not compensated by your public body. Okay, so that means that you probably have a, some, you work for someone or you have your own business, and that's perfectly fine. We get that. That's okay. The idea here though, is that you can't create an opportunity for your private employer or for your business in your role as a public official. So you have to make sure that there is clear distinction between your role and your private employment and your role as a public official, and that you do not create opportunities, uh, for your private business or your employer in your role as a public official. Okay, so, uh, this is either directly or indirectly. The idea here is that, uh, this is the example that came up in, in one of our trainings was, um, well, let's say I own a, I, I own a t-shirt printing business, and, uh, on the side, uh, would it be all right for me to suggest that we all get matching printed t-shirts? And, uh, I mean, I'll put in a bid, doesn't mean I'll get it, but I'll put in a bid. Well, yeah, no, you just, you, not only have you violated the prohibited use of office, but you know, you're also skating on that conflict of interest issue as well. So, uh, so how they kind of, uh, draw the line in this is that you want to make sure that you use no governmental body, body time. Uh, you use no governmental body resources. That includes your fellow employees too. You can't go over to, like, for example, we have, uh, we have a lawyer on staff. And so I can't go to her and say, hey, uh, you can help me out with this contract I'm trying to get. That, that wouldn't work either. So uh, no official action that would financially impact your business. Uh, no com- confidential information obtained, and then disclose all conflicts of interest. Now, I just want to back up a moment. This, this is not just you, this is you, your relative, a member of your household, or a business that you or your relative or member of your household is associated with. All right, everybody with me so far? All right, awesome. Okay, so next one's going to be employment and contracts. And so this one comes up from time to time as well. So, uh, the idea here is that you as a public official, if you played a significant role in authorizing a contract, then you cannot work under that contract for a period of two years from date of authorization. Okay, so what does that mean? Well, that just means that, let's say, for example, your role as a public official, uh, you played a significant role in authorizing a contract, and that's a, that's a broad term, by the way. When they say significant role, it's not just you signed it, maybe you were on a selection committee for vendors, or, uh, or, or selecting a contractor, executing a contractor, recommending approval, there's my, serving on a selection committee. Maybe you were just pricing vendors, okay? Uh, if you played a significant role in that contract, then, uh, you are restricted from working under that same contract for a period of two years. So what does that mean? Okay, let's say, for example, um, uh, you, you, you're part of this contract and, uh, you've signed on this company, and the company's come back and said, hey, uh, you know, I know you're on the planning board of, uh, the city of Carlton. Uh, we really could use a, um, project manager on this new contract we were just awarded. I know you had a hand in it, and I'd like you to, to hire you, uh, come onboard and help us with this, since you know the inner workings of what's going on here. Um, uh, of course, that's nice of them, but for us, ethics involved, it'd be a period of two years. So, um, once those two years passes, then if they still need that project manager, then yeah, you can move on then, but, um, it would be a violation if you did otherwise. Okay, so. Or if you did it within that two-year p- two-year stretch. All right, everybody with me so far? Okay, all right, so let me throw a, a trick question at you. All right, and, and this is a tricky one. I didn't talk about it, but I think y'all already have a handle on this. So in addition to your role as a public official, you also own your own business. Can you promote your business by posting flyers in the agency break room? I see a big, big no from Annette. Okay, so here's the deal with this training. This, this is, this training was put in place before I came onboard. And so it's a total, like, gotcha question, because the correct answer, because there's polling involved when, when, when I host the trainings, um, I have access to polling questions in the training, and, and the idea here is, no, you would not be able to. Okay, unless that bulletin board, it was in the break room, and that break room was open to the public. Okay, so that's, when you do the polling, yeah, right, it's like, oh, right, so, yeah. Uh, yeah, the idea is, yes, you could post it if the area is open to the public. Okay, so uh, that's the catch. Remember, if, if the opportu- if the opportunity is available to the public, then it's not a violation or prohibited use of office. All right, any questions on that? Wow, okay, I'm going to throw another one at you. All right, your public body contracts with a consulting firm. Your spouse is recently employed by this firm, but does not work on agency-related projects. Would you have a conflict of interest if a contracting matter involving the firm came before you? What do you think? Oh, you're, you're, you're muted, Annette. I, I saw you. Looks like you said something.
Potential.
All right. Okay, let me ask you this. Why potential?
Because he's not working on any agency-related projects.
I, I like where you're going with this, but this is actual. Because your spouse is employed by the firm, and it is a business which you are associated with. Doesn't matter what department your spouse works at. They are, that is a business which you're associated with. So it doesn't matter if, if, um, if they, uh, work in, let's say, the mailroom, or if they're on the board, or if they're, uh, a clerk. The idea here is it's still a business you're associated with regardless of, uh, what department.
Actually, it's, yeah, it's the third little, uh, bullet, or the third, it's not a paragraph, but the third item there that actually spells that out, and I, I kind of breezed on through that, so that was me. Yep.
It, it's okay. These are all trick questions. So, easy, clever, tough.
And I, and I, and I have to say, I'm just smiling to myself, because I recently retired a couple of years ago from the county and had so many of these, and I've, I've dealt with, uh, a few people there at the Ethics Commission with a lot of these, with Yampa County officials. So it's, it's kind of an interesting little, little evening here.
Yeah, I, I thought, I see your name on the, on the thing here, and it's iPad, I was like, that sounds familiar. I think we've seen your name.
Do we have a conflict of interest? Oh my gosh. Love to stop talking.
All right, awesome. Okay, so, uh, any questions so far? All right, let's go ahead and move into nepotism. Like I said, these all over, overlap a little bit, right? So a nepotism, the nepotism rules apply to, and you saw these definitions earlier, right? It's going to be relatives. It's also going to be household members. Okay? So in general, nepotism, and I'm going to give you the long, drawn-out version, and I'm going to give you my version of it. Um, in general, the way it works is a public official, uh, cannot directly engage in the personal employment, uh, by our public body uh, that would impact the employment of a relative or a member of your household. So what does that mean? That means you cannot participate in the, uh, interview discussion or, um, or debate in any public body that would affect the employment of your, the rel- a relative or member of your household. So this includes, uh, appointing, employing, promoting, discharging, firing, or demoting. uh, appointing, employing, promoting, discharging, firing, or demoting. Okay, and for me, it's easy. The way I think of it is as a public official, you can't participate in the hiring or firing, promoting or demoting of a relative or member of your household. That's, that's the simple way to, to put it. Now, it goes a little bit further. You also can't participate in the interview process, the discussion uh, or debate too. Again, you can't be part of the hiring, firing, promoting, or demoting. Okay? So not only can you not do it, you can't be part of discussion either. So um, now here's the catch. Unless your public body has something in place that allows it. Okay, so we already know in Oregon, there's a lot of small towns, not a whole lot of folks. And if there's a policy that allows it, then we want, you need to make sure that it's in writing. All right. It goes one step further. Okay, so you cannot uh, directly supervise uh, your uh, household member or uh, I'm sorry, your relative or member of your household. So even if they work there, you can't supervise them at all. Okay, again, unless your public body has uh, policies in place. All right, so scratch that. Now if they're a unpaid volunteer, then yeah, you are totally allowed to uh, supervise and participate in any hiring, firing, promoting, and demoting if they're volunteers. So that, that's where uh, they kind of draw the line. If they're, they're, they're paid, that's one set of rules. If they're volunteers, it's another set of rules. Now, let me take a moment to just back up for a sec because on the, on the supervision part of nepotism, um, it does say that uh, you are allowed uh, to supervise uh, a relative or member of your household in ministerial acts. Okay, so they can make copies, they can uh, they can uh, send out the mail. Uh, they can handle fax machines if y'all are still using a fax, uh, filing, small things like that, that's allowed. All right, any questions so far? Yeah, I see one. Go ahead.
How about um, financial oversight of their department?
Oh, that's a good question. And that's one, I have not had that question. So what I'm going to do is uh, I'm writing this down. Because I haven't had that question. So I, I always defer to um, you can't, you know, hire, fire, promote, or demote, but you also can't directly supervise. But you're talking now about um, as I'm thinking about now, you're, if you're making that financial oversight, it, it might, it, it, just right off top, this is my opinion. But right off the top, it sounds like it's going back to if you're making decisions, that's going to affect the public body. Then that's not a business which you're associated with. So it's probably going to go back to that, but I don't like giving you the wishy-washy answer. I like double checking things. So uh, let me do this. I'll, I'll hit Amy up tomorrow and I'll shoot everyone an email with an answer to that question. So that we're, we're all on the same page. That's a good question though. I've not had that one. All right, so here's, I'm going to quiz you real quick. All right, so choose all that applied nepotism rules apply to your uh, A cousins, B children, C roommates, D parents, E grandparents, F fostered children. And this is just on the surface. We're not going to get into the whole, you know, the gray area who may be living in your household. This is strictly based upon uh, the statutes. What do y'all think? Tell me the two that wouldn't count. How's that? I'll make it easier.
A, unless they're living with you.
Correct.
And you know, it could be D or E unless they're living with you. Oh, wait a minute. No, parents were included, but grandparents were not, right?
You got it.
But foster children?
Okay, so grandparents are, are not unless they're living with you. And if they're your foster children, you're going to assume they're living with you, but they could be your adult foster children. So.
Okay, so yeah, in, in general, foster children, yes, would be a member of your household. So um, you got it. So by the, by the definitions we saw earlier, um, as a relative or member of your household, in that scenario, cousins and grandparents, they don't count. It doesn't mean we don't love them. They just, they don't count in the statutes. Okay. Any questions so far? All right, so uh, I keep saying this, but um, gifts, I say, I keep saying this in a lot of trainings, gifts is the toughest one. I, I think conflicts of interest is pretty tough, privileged of office, eh, it's okay. But gifts is a tough one because um, there's so many different scenarios in which a public official will receive a gift. Okay, so we have to kind of break this down and just let me give you a heads up. Your acceptance of the gift is always going to depend on your role as a public official and your decision-making powers. Okay? So um, on the surface, uh, just remember also with gifts, it's us as individuals, as public officials to be responsible for what, what we accept as far as gifts are concerned. So it is our responsibility. So first thing is, is what a gift, what is a gift? And this is the statute's definition. I know what a gift is. Okay, I know when someone's giving me something. But the idea here is um, we have to define it for the purpose of the training and the statute. So first thing it says is gift is something of economic value. All right, it's given without equivalent payment. And it's given to a public official, a relative or a household member. And it's not offered to others on the same terms and conditions. So I'm kind of like, okay, you just made a gift all weird and I don't understand what's going on here. So here's, here's how I break it down. So if a local coffee shop is sending out mailers for a buy one, get one free coffee and it's, they're sending out to everyone that lives in the city, is it a gift?
It's a coupon.
Yeah, it's a coupon. It's, it's a mailer. It's going out to everyone. Yeah, it's, it has some value. You're buying one coffee and you get another one free. But it's offered to everyone in the city. Okay? Now, I go into that same coffee shop on my own and I go to buy a cup of coffee and the manager says, hey, that's Charlie. He's with the Ethics Commission. Hey, this coffee's on me. Is it a gift? Absolutely, it's a gift. Okay, because at this point, it's only offered to me. He's only buying me the cup of coffee. It is worth value, right? Uh, it's given to me without, that equivalent payment. And even if, even if my spouse goes in or one of my relat- uh, relative or member of my household goes in and gets that same free cup of coffee, then it's a gift. Okay? So that's how I kind of break it down. If it's something that's given to you, it's worth something. They're only giving it to you, you're not making equivalent payment for it, then it's absolutely gift. If it's offered to others on the same terms and conditions, not a gift. So we got a gift out of the way. We kind of hinted at what is not a gift. It's basically this. First thing is your official compensation. Okay, so remember, this is broad, right? So this isn't just your salary, your 401K or your uh, your healthcare. This includes anything else that your, your public body compensates you with. And that's that free parking downtown, uh, maybe maybe they let, let you take the vehicle home. If you have uh, overnight travel and you get back into town late, that's allowed. Just make sure that's in writing. Anything else your public body gives you as far as compensation that's in writing, that's not a gift. Also, if it's available to the public. Okay, so one of the things we talk about a lot in here and we get a lot of questions about are swag bags. And I just found out uh, when I came on with the Ethics Commission, I knew what a swag bag was, but I didn't know what the definition of it was. Swag bag is, stands for stuff we all get. I did not know this, so uh, I learned something new, but here's my scenario, since I brought it up. Your agency is sending you to a conference. Attendees of the event consist of colleagues, stakeholders, vendors, and members of the general public. A, a vendor at the event is handing out a free swag bag. All right, so we have to kind of analyze this a little bit. I can already tell you right now, if it's being offered to members of the general public, then I could probably hang on to that swag bag, but we have to go to this analysis. So is it something of economic value? All right, so you open up the swag bag. Swag bags usually what? Sunglasses, uh, a stress squeeze thing, something that lights up, a keychain, a lanyard. Uh, may not be much, but it is worth something. Um, is it given to you and an official, a public official, relative, or member of your household? Is it given without equivalent payment? We're not going to get into the whole, well, maybe it's part of my registration fees or part of the entry fee. We're just going to say the interview is the entry fee. They're handing these out. You can take it or not take it. Of course, is it not offered to others? So when it comes to swag bags, um, the idea here is you really have to sit back and see who the item, first off, the conference, what, what are you, who's attending this conference? And then who's handing out that free swag bag? So uh, the way they break this down is, here's my example for you. So your agency is sending you to a conference. Attendees of the event consist of public officials only. A vendor at the event is handing out a free swag bag. So what do y'all think of this scenario? Right off the top, yeah, I see thumbs down, right? So yeah, and someone told me, they're like, well, the public can go to anything they want. Not necessarily. Okay, so I mean, if it's a, if it's a conference for uh, uh, city auditors, then odds are the public isn't wanting, I mean, sure they can go to that, but obviously it's, it's, it's geared towards city auditors. Okay, so that's primarily who, who that conference is geared towards. So if they're handing out a free swag bag, this is where we get in that, that spot. We have to kind of analyze things before we can accept it. So we need to know who the source of the gift is. And uh, the source is always going to be the ultimate payer of the gift. Do they have a legislative or administrative interest in my decision-making as a public official that's distinct from the general public? And the last part is, what is the value? Okay? So that's, that's your, your first set of questions. So let's break this down a little bit further. So the gift source. So the gift source, you heard me say, is the ultimate payer of the expense. Okay? It is our responsibility to know the source's identity. Okay, so uh, if we don't know the source's identity, then what do we do? Okay, let's just say we go to our office and there is a, a gift basket uh, full of really great stuff. Um, and on, on it, there's just a note saying, hey, thanks for the job you do. And this actually happened at, at a, at a public body where someone left a note saying, hey, we appreciate the work you do for the community. Uh, here's a thank you. They had no idea who it came from. Well, so as a public official, as an individual, you can't accept that because you don't know who the source is. And let's just say that gift basket was way over the gift amount. We'll talk about that here in a second. So anytime you're offered a gift that's anonymous, um, you need to either, and you can't find out who it is. Yeah, I, I see the thumbs down, right? So there's two ways to handle this. Um, either accept it on behalf of the public body. Okay, so uh, you know, just throw it in the break room, open it up, tell everyone to have at it. Or uh, you can take that gift and donate it. Just make sure that you don't accept the tax benefit from that donation. Okay? And so uh, again, I'm building here. So this is the first part. So let's go to the next part. So we need to know who the source is. So the next one is, do they have a legislative or administrative interest in me as a public official? So that means that they have economic interest, meaning that uh, they are going to be affected by the decisions I make as a public official. Okay? And that decision is distinct from that of the general public. Okay, so uh, let me back up a moment. Years ago, I say in a past life, I was a state inspector and um, really didn't have that much. I didn't feel like I had that much decision-making, but um, as an inspector, I was offered lunches by those folks that I was inspecting. So we started thinking about it that way. It's kind of like, well, wait a minute. Yeah, I do have actually some decision-making involved in my work. I could pass or fail their facilities. And me passing or failing their facilities means either money they're going to have to spend or money they're not going to have to spend. And so them buying me lunch, they have an interest in decisions I make. Okay? So um, and so we get asked this a lot. They're kind of like, well, wait a minute, you know? Uh, can I accept this gift? And we always go back to, well, do they have a legislative or administrative interest in the decisions you make? And so that's really, again, up to us as the public official to determine. We have to sit back for a moment and go, okay, so uh, you know, that lunch for our director, yes, absolutely. That same lunch for say, someone in our training department, maybe not so much because uh, they're not going to, the effects the training groups, uh, the training folks do isn't going to affect them. So it would, it would change depending on your role as a public official based upon uh, your decision-making. All right, so you are allowed to accept gifts from those that have a legislative or administrative interest. It's allowed. Okay? But there's a limit. Okay? And that limit is uh, you must not exceed fifty dollars in a calendar year. And that's from January to December. Okay? So if we go back to that scenario of me being inspector that past life, um, yeah, they could buy me lunch, but I'd be restricted to that fifty dollars in the calendar year. So um, someone said, well, that's, that's a lot of donuts or that's like, I'm like, yeah, but here, here's the thing, uh, it's uh, for me, gen- it, for me in that past role, uh, I didn't get any lunches from anyone because it just didn't feel right. Um, that just, it just didn't feel right. So um, but yes, you are allowed. Just be aware of that, of that restriction. So um, for us as public officials, this also includes inside the office. So another way to kind of uh, play this out in the office is um, those of us, I'm going to say down here on the bottom, because I'm, I'm a trainer, I have folks above me. Uh, I have an interest in the decisions that our director makes. Okay, I have a decision, I have interest in uh, possibly getting a raise, a promotion. Uh, so uh, my director would have to restrict the amount of gifts that I give them. Okay, so why? Because that legislative or administrative interest is there. So they have to step back and go, wait a minute, um, I could accept gifts. There, that restriction comes into play, right? I can accept gifts, but we have to cap it at fifty dollars. Okay? Now, let's flip it around. Uh, our directors uh, above us, or those folks that are above us in the decision-making realm, can shower us with gifts all day long. Okay? The reason being is that uh, there's nothing, I have no decision-making uh, uh, power over um, anything my director does. Okay, so that's, that's kind of how that works. Or, or my coworker, or my coworkers on the same level. Okay, so I can't, I can't offer anyone a promotion or raise or, or give them time off. I, I just don't have that power. So uh, gifts amongst coming down and amongst employees all day long, we're good to go. Just remember, it always applies going up. So just kind of think about that. If anyone's getting you a gift and uh, you, you're going to have to stop and make that, that uh, that, analyze that for a moment. All right, so now we're going to get into the gift exception. So heads up, there are a ton of gift exceptions, uh, just a ton of them. So um, there's sixteen of them to be exact in the statutes. We're only going to hit a few today. I had to cut some of them out because uh, I know that I was told that y'all really want to talk about some SCI stuff, so I, I saved room for that. Okay, so that's going to be our dessert. So um, not a good dessert, but a dessert. All right, so uh, gift exceptions, there's sixteen of them. A heads up, we have a one-hour training that talks about all this stuff. So we do a deep dive in the standalone training. It's one hour, just about gifts alone. All right, so the first one is relatives. So again, by the statute's definition, um, you can exchange gifts amongst relatives all day long, not a problem. Um, an unsolicited token or award. So this is where we start getting into that appreciation award or um, uh, just a, uh, just a just an award for the sake of giving you an award for just being an awesome person. And, and this is allowed. The idea here is that uh, whatever that item is, the resale value is expected to be less than twenty-five dollars. Okay, so just heads up. If your name's engraved on it, that typically knocks you down to that twenty-five dollar mark. But there is a catch. Okay, so if it's, if it's a plaque and it comes with a crystal vase or a gold watch or um, a uh, uh, something that goes beyond that twenty-five dollar amount, uh, then you're going to be restricted from accepting it. Okay, unless it can be separated. Okay, unless that, unless that plaque can be kept, you can give the vase back or, or they give you the plaque and a watch and you can give the watch back. Uh, that would be allowed. You can keep the plaque. All right, next one's going to be a food and beverage exception. So this is one where you as a public official, all these next scenarios are going to be you as a public official representing your public body and you're attending a public event where other public officials are attending. The public is allowed, the event is publicized. And part of this is a reception where there's either a lunch or a dinner. This is allowed. Okay? Don't confuse it with a private dinner. If someone's there and they say, hey, let's skip this dinner. I want to take you out to, let's grab. Don't confuse it with a private dinner. If someone's there and they say, hey, let's skip this dinner, I wanna take you out, let's grab something different. Then that would be, that would fall back under the private dinner, would be falling under the gift provisions. So, uh, but here, again, representing your public body as a public official. Uh, members of the public are allowed to attend lunch or dinner, that's allowed. Same scenario, you as a public official, except we knocked this down a little bit. You as a public official, again, representing your public body. Uh, and you're at a meeting or an event and there's incidental entertainment, or maybe there's donuts and coffee. Uh, muffins, and those are allowed as well. It's considered incidental. So just remember, anytime you're offered a gift, it's, it, it's our responsibility as public officials. To determine whether or not we can accept them. So, um, we always have to analyze it. Is it something of economic value? Uh, did I make an equivalent payment? Is it offered to others on the same terms and conditions? And then the curve ball here is, does it, do any of the exceptions apply? And so, uh, once you break that down, then you have to analyze. Whether or not you can accept it. And so, uh, then you have to determine who the source of the gift is. Uh, and do they have a legislative or administrative interest in my role as a public official, my decision making capacities? And of course, is it within the fifty dollar limit? And then of course, if you've accepted anything else from them in the past year, right, in the past calendar year. Alright. Throw, I'm gonna throw a question out at you and tell me what you think, okay? Get ready, it's confusing. I don't like this question, but it, again, they were designed to make you think a little bit. Alright. The local gym is offering a discount on a monthly membership to employees of your public body. Daycare providers, healthcare workers, first responders, and grocery store workers in your community. Can you accept the gift without violating ethics law? What do you think?
Yes.
Seeing a nod. So yeah, the answer is yes, because it's, it is offered to others that are not public officials, okay? So the, 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 the catch here would be if the local gym was only offering it to. Uh, planning board commissioners for City Carlton, that was it. Then yeah, you guys probably have to stop back and either, you know, either go into cahoots with each other and all join or. Play it safe and say no, okay? The answer, the correct answer to that is no, okay?
But, but wait, even if it was, I mean, even if we all decided to join, that still wouldn't be okay, because.
No, that was, that was my, that was my sad attempt at making a joke.
Okay.
No, it would not. If y'all all are in cahoots, then yeah, no, it still wouldn't be.
Then we're already in violation.
Yeah, you're already in violation, so.
Yeah.
Alright, in, in fact, here's, here's, this happens quite a bit, not so much local gym. But we get a lot of questions because self, uh, cell phone providers or cell service providers. Offer a lot of discounts to city and county employees. And so we've had this come across to us, hey, can we accept this? And it always comes back to, well, it depends. Uh, you know, is it being offered, is it being offered to others in the community? Okay, is it, is it, is it being offered to you, but you, but is it also being, also being offered to others as well? Okay, and if it is, then that opens it up to accepting it. But then it comes down to, no, it's just city employees, or no, it's just county employees. Well, then it's gonna be paid, based upon, well, what is your role as a public official? Are you on? Are you part of the folks that determines whether or not the city gets a, who they go through for their cell provider? Or are you just someone that? Uh, you know, I have, I'm, I'm not, I can't decide on whether or not the city goes with this particular cell provider. Uh, then you may be able to accept it, but those folks that uh, could make a decision that could impact that cell, cell. Cell service provider, uh, then those folks are, probably have to sit back and determine whether or not they can take it. So again, it goes back to your role as a public official. And your decision making, and that decision making would affect. That particular vendor or this, this, the source of the gift, and would it have an impact on them?
Yep.
So there, here's, you know, everyone always says, oh, gifts is easy, you know? We say, yeah, it's easy, don't accept them. That's. Alright. So I told you I save the best for last. So what is a statement of economic interest? Okay, we're, we're coming up on that season, by the way, so. Uh, uh, right now. Where we're, we're talking to a lot of jurisdictional contacts, we're doing jurisdictional contact training for those folks. Uh, are y'all familiar with who the jurisdictional contact is with your district? With your.
David?
Are you talking about David Hunter? Our folks are, okay, yeah, David is. So there should be someone at your, in your, uh, at your city that's kind of the liaison between. Uh, the city and David. David's with, with us at the Ethics Commission. Basically what it is with jurisdictional contact, they basically tell us. Who, who are the SCI followers in the district, because we have no idea of all the cities. Uh, in, in Oregon, cities, counties, uh, all the other districts that are involved. But let me break this down. Again, let's, let's break out the definitions. So a statement of economic interest is something that is, uh, a public official is required to file. And so there's a whole list of public officials in LRS. Two four four dot O five O. So if you're wondering. Uh, do I need to file? Uh, you would look up your role as a public official in two four four point O five O. Uh, to get that. It's a ton of folks. It's a ton. So. And the idea here is that, uh, you provide us with your financial sources. Now let me be clear on something. It is not your financial income. We're not looking at the dollar amount. It's just who your source of income is. So everyone has a source of income, okay? So, um, you know, if you're, if you're retired, your, your source of income is social security, okay? Um, I work for OGAC. If I had to file, my source of income would be the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, okay? I would not, we are not asking for your salary or that dollar amount, okay? The only time we ask for dollar amounts is anything you may have received from a source that has a legislative or administrative interest. That's it. Alright, this is due annually. I'm gonna go ahead and say this now, you're gonna hear it again. Uh, in my next few slides, but it is done uh, between March fifteenth and April fifteenth. Okay, so you have uh, roughly thirty days to, to submit this, okay? Now, heads up, if you're already in the system, that's fine. You may wanna take a moment now, since we're in, we're in, we're coming up on that season. To just kind of step in and make sure that all your information is up to date, okay? So as an SCI filer, it is your responsibility to keep your account up to date. That's, that's a long-winded way of saying, make sure you have a good email address in there and that your name's right, okay? It is due annually. And it is done through our electronic filing system. So if you're wondering, hey, April fifteenth fell on a Sunday or a Saturday night. Or so, can I do it on Monday? No, it's open twenty four seven, so. Um, you are required by, by April fifteenth to have that done, okay? I say that because we get a lot of lobbyists that, that they have to file and they always say, I shouldn't say always, but some folks are like. Hey, well, it fell on a Sunday, so I figured I could do it on Monday. Well, yeah, you can do it on Monday, but you're, you're gonna accrue some penalties for that, so. Because you were late. So. Um, information is not included. You heard me say this already. So, uh, your income, again. Your income is that dollar amount, we don't wanna know it. Also, your home address, okay? Let me add a caveat here. The only time your home address would be in your SCI. Is if you're running your business out of your home, okay? So when we ask for your business address. And you're working out of your home or using your home as your business address, then yes, your business, your home address would now pop up in that category. Okay? So you heard me say, a lot of folks file. Uh, the shortlist on here is gonna be, uh, city and county officials. Uh, judicial officers, justices of the peace. Uh, port board commissioners. Uh, or all the, all the directors of Oregon governmental agencies have to file. And then education administrative and financial officers and school board members. This heads up. Uh, last year was the first year for school board members to have to file. And the first question they said was, have you ever had to do this before? Why do we have to do it now? Um, the Ethics Commission doesn't decide, the legislature decides on who files. And so. They're, they determine that. School board members are responsible for some large budgets, and because of that. They determine that school board members should be filing an SCI as well, okay? Again, it goes back to that transparency and knowing where your interests lie, okay? And again, those decision making uh, powers that those public officials have. Alright. So. We're SCI resources. So if you're, if you're new to filing or you forgot. That's fine. It's been a year, okay? I, I can't remember anything from a year ago. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm in trouble for everything. So, uh, it's always like, this happens every year, Charlie, our anniversary, really? Yes, I forgot. Okay, so that's, that's me from a year ago, so. Um, but we're here for you folks. So we provide, uh, OGAC has trainings for SCI filers, so we. Uh, if you wanna take a training, it's a one hour training, we, we do that. We also have written, a written handout guide. Just heads up, there has been some changes for SCI filers this year. I'm, I'm getting to it. Um, but right now, uh, our written handout is not ready yet because that change has not been put in there yet. Um, we have a ton of information on our OGAC website. For trainings, and of course, you know the big one, you heard me say this earlier, uh, we are a resource. Uh, Annette, you mentioned David, that means that you've, you've talked to him quite a bit. So let me back up a moment. You can always reach out to us. Do not hesitate to pick up the phone or shoot us an email. We are geared up and ready for this. Every year this happens, so we're, there's already. Uh, it's not written anywhere, but it's implied strongly that you cannot take your vacation between. Uh, February and April, uh, because the season gets pretty, pretty hectic. So the new thing for this year. Is that, uh, all SCI filers will now have to list. Their clients, their customers, their investors, their legal relationship, their contractual relationship. And business relationships with those that have, that, uh, are ten percent or more of your business's gross. Annual income. Again, it's not the dollar amount, it's just the source, okay? It's just those entities, okay? That is it. So yes, you're gonna have to step back for a moment and, uh, do the math on this, okay? So, uh, the way I, the way I kind of. Uh, in, in, again, in my simple mind, I kind of think in terms of, okay, yeah, you, you do own a catering business. Or you own a landscaping business, or maybe you own a construction business. And you do a lot of business with a lot of folks. Well, you're gonna have to sit back and go, okay, well, who are my biggest clients and do they make up ten percent of my gross annual income? And if the answer is yes, uh, then you need to list them. And of course, also those. That have a legislative or administrative interest. Okay? So this is, this is the. The, the new thing for this year. So we're already planning a lot of pushback on this, so again, this is not something we dreamed up. This is something the legislature said, okay, hey, let's, uh, let's, let's step up the game a little bit and, uh. Look at this a little bit closer. So it's, it's no secret, you've probably seen the headlines in the past year or so about a lot of public officials. And, uh, this is directly, uh, uh, how this has impacted, uh, the SCI filers, so. Alright, let's go one step further. Alright, so why does a statement of economic interest need to be filed? I think it's, I think it's pretty clear, but the idea here, again. Going back to our original, uh, I think our second or third slide, to safeguard the public trust, okay? Again, it's that, that level of transparency. Us, uh, identifying our, our sources of income, identifying those folks that make up ten percent or more of our client base. Or ten percent or more of our gross annual income, or those folks that have a legislative or administrative interest. Kind of shines a light on our conflicts of interest, our possible use of office, and again, it is required by law. Okay, so that's the big one. It is required by law. So. Uh, you're probably thinking, okay, well, it's required by law. Okay, what does that actually mean? That means that if you don't file, that there are sanctions that come into play. So the way it works is that, uh, you already know, March fifteenth through April fifteenth is. Uh, SCI filer season, and you already know that. You can reach out to us at any time if you need help with that. There's also, if you're in, kind of an independent person. All our stuff will be rolling out, all the new stuff with, all the changes will be available on that March fifteenth, uh, opening date. Hopefully before then, I'm not part of that, that group, but hopefully before then. But what I'm getting at is it happens sometimes, you do file late. We try and close that gap. But if you do happen to file late, it is ten dollars per day for the first fourteen days. Okay? Um, the next thing is. It goes past that fourteen day limit, then it bumps up to fifty dollars per day. Until you hit. That five thousand dollar max. Alright, so that's, that's the penalties for not filing on time. Um, our records, uh, will show what you've done in the past years. If you filed, there's. Our database, because it's done through EFS, it tells us, hey, this folks filed, this person filed late. They were two days late, three days late, uh, you know? Last year, the year before, the year before that. So, uh, just a heads up, these are things that we are aware of. We do see those folks that are accruing penalties. If we find that you are accruing penalties, first thing first is the electronic filing system. Will send you an email every day telling you, you are, uh, you are late with filing your SCI. So that's again, important that you go in and make sure that your information is up to date, okay? Uh, we are also notified, and also the jurisdictional contact is notified as well. So the idea here, look, here's, here's my disclaimer on this. It's, it makes our life easier at the Ethics Commission when everyone files on time. And that basically, if April fifteenth, if April sixteenth, they're all around, everyone's filed on time, we're done for the year, we're good. Uh, we can close the book and move on. But, uh, filing late doesn't do any, we don't, it's not like these penalties go to us and we have a, a party or anything. It goes into the general fund, so we don't even see this. So for us, uh, it, it's our benefit. Not only your benefit, but our benefit as well when you file on time, okay? Alright. Any questions for me on this section? Okay, alright, SCI filing, you know, look, here's the thing. I'll just throw that, throw this out. If you get stuck, call us. Just call us, that's. Um, we, we deal with a lot of public officials. Uh, you guys already know. There's folks out there that are in some, in, out there in the frontier. Um, areas of Oregon, cell service, internet service is horrendous. Um, we fully expect to be helping people fire their, file their SEIs over the phone. That's just part of the, part of the course, so. Um, do not hesitate to reach out to us. Alright. So, just to kind of, uh, recap what we've covered tonight. Uh, we talked about use of office, private employment, conflicts of interest, nepotism. You got the SCI part as a bonus. Um, but the other part of the Ethics Commission, you, you're on the training side, you're on the upfront part of it. We also handle complaints. So when it comes to complaints, just heads up, we only take signed complaints. We do not take anonymous complaints. Every complaint we, we get, there's gonna be follow-up questions. We need to know who we're talking to. And we will be reaching out to those public officials that the complaint was made, and that's where our preliminary review kind of kicks in. So, uh. We go into preliminary review, if we determine there is a, uh, uh, looks like a, a violation of. Of, uh, RS two four four, or lobby, or public law. We go to the commissioners and ask them if we can move forward with an investigation. Of course, if a violation is found, then we get into those penalties again. A little bit of what we saw earlier, but this, this is gonna apply more to. RS two four four, and, uh, well, this applies to all of them, actually, so. There's that five thousand dollar maximum penalty, uh, ten thousand dollars if it's a willful violation. Uh, forfeiture twice the amount of any financial benefit realized from the ethics violation, and it's no secret. As public officials, if, if you've been pretty good, but one day you just slipped up. We send out a lot of letters of education, okay? So, uh, basically that's just telling you, hey, here's what the statute says, and this is what you did, and. Don't do it again, because if you do it again, you may find yourself in one of these other categories at that point. So, but again, remember. We're here for you folks, so we do. So we do offer staff advice, staff opinions and commission advisory opinions. And what I'm getting at is when you reach out to us with a situation that you found yourself in, this is something that's current, this isn't something that's happened in the past, but if you find yourself currently in a situation, reach out to us, shoot us an email. What I'm saying is, is if we offer staff advice, staff opinion, or if we give you a commissionary advisory opinion, that offers you a level of safe harbor, okay? We will give you instructions, what your next moves will be. Can you accept this gift? Do you have to return it? Trying to think of some other ones. Can you, can you drive that agency vehicle home? Those type of things, that's, that's something that you can ask us. And if it's, if it's allowed, I mean, we're going to ask tons more questions. These never are just asked a question, there's always a back and forth with these. But again, it's giving you that level of safe harbor, you do have to follow the instructions. So there's tons of resources on our website as well. You guys probably already know, if you file an SCI, you can find it in public records. You can look up anyone that's an SCI filer that's filed in our public records. Again, doesn't tell you the dollar amount, it just goes to the source, but you can see everyone in there that's filed. You can also look up past complaints, past advice, trainings. This is, this is the big overview training that we give for public officials. We break this down into one hour chunks, so we offer more questions, we give more scenarios. We throw in a lot more questions. Today was just the broad overview. And of course, if, if you have a complaint, you can also file it online as well on our website. I already know, when you look at our website, I'm like, it's like every other public body website. It's like a lot of words and a whole lot of buttons. I'm like, there's got to be an easier way, but this is, this seems to be the way it works for public bodies. But before I close out, just unmute, tell me what your biggest takeaway today is? What was the one thing today that you're just like, I did not know that and I am now enlightened? I'll give you a minute while you're thinking about it, here's how you reach us.
I will, I, I think the distinction about someone who's a volunteer.
Yeah.
I mean, that sort of stuff happens around here, that there's, you know, we know people who serve on boards of nonprofits and things like that. And, and knowing that that's not necessarily, I mean, that, that if they're a volunteer, it's not a conflict of interest, is, was new, totally new to me.
Yeah, I think, I think Annette said it so poetically when she said, you know, the money's not going into someone's pocket. And so that, that's, that's the thing. You know, volunteer, nonprofit, there's no financial gain, then, and financial gain, again, your pocket, then yeah, it's not a conflict of interest. But here's, here's the thing though, we get this a lot, it's kind of like, well, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if I have a conflict of interest. Hey, if you're not sure, but you think something's there, then, then just say, hey, folks, I have a potential conflict of interest here because, you know, my, one of my relatives, you know, is on the board of the YMCA, but they're not paid, but I feel like I just need to make this announcement that there's a potential conflict. That's totally allowed, that's, you know, if you're unsure. I mean, we had one that was recently where it was, a fire district was, they were voting to, to build a road so that folks could evacuate from a neighborhood. And someone complained, it's a wall, that person on the board lives in that neighborhood that that street would be driving through. And so that's a, that's a conflict of interest. And it's kind of like, well, we came back and said, well, where's, where's the financial gain? You know, it's, it's, it's helping everyone in the neighborhood evenly. I mean, you could argue that, okay, well, maybe it saves five minutes off their commute to work, right? But it's, it was unclear, it's like, well, they could announce a potential, but right now there's no, there's no actual conflict because there's no real money going into their pocket or no avoidance of financial detriment. So yeah, potential all day long. I mean, every time we have a commission meeting, there's, there's one, our commissioner is always saying, hey, you know what? Potential conflict, I know this person, they're, they're a member of my community. I know this person, so I'm going to just back out. And so potential all day long, that no harm, no foul. It's the actual that's, that you got to watch out for. Okay, so it's 7:47, that's, that's all I have. Again, my name's Charlie Asparza, there's my email, charles, you know, when I'm in trouble, I get called charles.asparza@ogaq.org.gov. Shoot me an email, you can give me a phone call or, no, my phone's not on there, but you can reach me, 503-377-5105. I do have a follow-up email for y'all regarding the financial oversight of public officials and how that may relate to nepotism. I think we kind of answered it, but I, I want to get a solid answer for that one. So expect a follow-up email probably tomorrow or Wednesday. So other than that, all I can say is thank you for having me. Amy reached out to me back, she actually reached out to Ruth and I drew the short straw and had to train you guys tonight. I joke, it's, I'm a trainer, everyone in the office knows. Man, if there's a live audience to throw Charlie in front of, by all means do it. So again, thank you for having me, that's all I have.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you for making it fun.
Yeah, and with that, okay, here's my, my, my pitch, right? I'll, I'll be sending you a customer survey as well. So if you just take the time out to fill that out, just let us know. If you enjoy the training, if you didn't enjoy the, enjoy the training, if you wish we expanded on more things or needed more detail, let us know. We kind of, we really, really rely on feedback, because we usually don't, we send out the emails, we really don't know what, what's going on out there, if anyone benefited from it. So please take that customer survey, let us know, let us know how we're doing and what we can do to improve. Okay, with that, that's all I got. I'm going to stop my share and I'm going to let Amy, Amy take over, sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, so it looks like our chair is gone, so if I share, you get a little taste. Unless we have any commissioner comments, we are ready to adjourn whenever you guys are.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Almost adjourned.
You second a vote? We adjourn.
All right, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good, Charlie.
Charlie.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Bye-bye.